Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order at seven ten on March twenty seventh. To those who are watching, we apologize. We've run into some technical difficulties. So it will be, the meeting will not be live streamed tonight, but will be available tomorrow on the town's website. We have an agenda before us. Does administration have any additions? Thirteen point three under new business. Does anyone on council have an addition? Someone prepared to move the agenda? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. We have the meeting minutes from March the thirteenth. Any additions or deletions? Corrections, I should say. The only one that I noted is the in five point one, or sorry, in seven point one, the delegation. There should have been a resolution in there to accept that as information. I'm not. Okay. I guess we'll. Okay. I actually don't recall if anyone made one or not, but okay. All right. Will someone want to move the minutes as presented? Okay, Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried and then something new for anyone watching. We will now be adopting the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting at a regular council meeting. So we have the January sixteenth, twenty twenty two committee, the whole minutes. Any errors, omissions? Someone prepared to move those. Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried and then the minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty two committee, the whole minutes. Comments, additions, airs? Someone prepared to move? Counselor Libra, all in favor? Carrie and sorry, I'm also learning the new mic system, so I'm not getting people to hit their buttons. There's no delegations. I don't believe we've received a report from the mayor.
No, the the mayor did not provide a report.
All right, so council committee reports, I will start on a March the fifteenth, I attended the ready board meeting. Of interest, we are going to be doing a number of videos sort of showcasing local businesses. At this point, I believe we have a total of four in the budget, although we're looking to see if we can get some additional ones approved. So maybe watch the ready website for that. And then on March twenty first, I attended the Upper Hay Regional Forest Public Advisory Committee meeting. We received two presentations, one on wildland urban interface structural protection and the other on fire smart programming. And that's all I have. Any questions? That was reported at the last meeting. I'm all right, Counselor Anderson.
I have no committees to report on.
Counselor Jessman. Same here, I have no. Counselor Lambert. Counselor Libra.
I also have no committees to report on.
And Counselor Welkey. Microphone. And I'm not sure how to turn it on. Oh, it's automatic.
So I'm live? Okay. On, sorry, the twenty first of March, I attended a community futures director's board meeting. Not a lot to report, except that we are increasing our efforts to obtain more diversity on our board. So there will be some initiatives going out to try to increase the members and increase members of minority groups and that sort of thing to be on that board. There's currently, I believe, twenty some odd possible positions available. So we'll be looking to the public and advocating for some new members on that board, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Someone prepared to remove or approve those reports for information? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Council action list. Any questions for administration? Yes, I noticed that. So we have two staff people on that?
They're just both there, one one they were from the communication side of things and some experience with this.
Okay, cool. Any other questions on the action list? Someone prepared to move that for information? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carrie, the upcoming events list. Questions? I believe the Humane Society fundraiser for Nuffi Night is this weekend. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And I believe it's sold out. I seen so.
Any other questions, comments? Someone prepared to move that for information? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Old business, the responsible animal ownership by law. And I see from administration, there's a request to table list to the April eleventh. Any questions, comments? You're prepared to move that? Counselor Jessman moves the recommendation, all in favor? Carried. Land use by law, I believe a similar recommendation from administration to table list to the April eleventh meeting? Any comments, questions? Someone prepared to remove the recommendation? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. The twenty twenty three capital budget.
Um, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. We have put together the final twenty twenty three capital budget. The recommendation that administration has is to approve the capital budget as presented. Further, that council accept the increased budget of a hundred and ten thousand to the twenty twenty one capital project for the town hall generator. It is being funded from the twenty twenty four capital MSI allocation that amendment has been has been put through to MSI, just waiting for the go ahead from the approval from council and then the allocation, the funds are there for the twenty twenty four allocation. And any specific questions to any of the changes for from the March twentieth committee of whole meeting? Myself or any of the directors pertaining to those projects can help you.
Director Clark did put some more information together on the groating and Director Straub and Director Gavin have some more information on the vehicle.
When I had read, and I'm just trying to find it now, on the planning and development vehicle, I see we've removed that from the budget. Is that correct or not?
No, Deputy Mayor, we removed the fire department tender from the from the budget.
All right, so I guess we'll go to Director Straub. The grout. The the vehicle, I guess, start with that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Haley did do a presentation, I believe, and.
Um, no, I think this is just on the whether we're replacing the vehicle or not.
So Ms. Gavin has done a bit of a brief for you there, I believe, regarding that. So we did have the vehicle in the operations department shop and we reviewed it and the brief should be before you. It looks like it could last a couple more years. Ms. Gavin and I did discuss that if it's if it's councils thought, the vehicle still has some value as it is. If it's the intent to trade it in in two years and get rid of it or sell it, I don't see it being out of condition where you're going to get another community to buy it on overly used vehicles. So you lose all the lighting package and all that. So what I would suggest as an option is that we look at potentially selling that vehicle this summer, this fall. And if he can get the value out of the outfit package, the that that is listed, then I would seriously look at purchasing a new chassis and then paying for the outfit. If you don't get that value, I would just carry it on until there's no value left to it. If you run it the way it is till there's no value, you're out all that emergency lighting package because he can't resell it. But it's just a thought of an option for council to decide if they want to have administration try to sell it and get that value. And if that value is reached, then all you're purchasing is a new chassis because the outfits paid for.
I I agree with that idea, but also would down the road, would there be another option of re purposing the vehicle likes if we used it with the current position for two or three years, would there be any use for it if we were to say, put it in another program just for in town use or whatever?
That's a good question, Counselor Jessman. We have currently two old by law or peace officer vehicles that are going to be disposed of this year. We tried using them. They just don't fit to our to our organization as a general purpose vehicle. They're not great for grass crew. Maybe in a min vehicle, but once you remove all the lighting package, they're full of holes. And there's a lot of, we tried using one as a dog catching vehicle, but it just doesn't work well. Pickup truck seems to be more functional. We have tried. We do have a couple of spare, very well used ones.
All right, anyone else have a question on that issue? Then just a brief update on the epoxy at the pool.
Director Clark will address that.
Good evening, Council. So I followed up with the company who would be doing the regrouding and they don't actually remove the existing grout. They would just grow over. So regrow usually lasts about seven to 10 years. The last regret was done in two thousand and fourteen. Since then, we've just been doing kind of spot fixes which aren't really holding up.
So in their quote, it says that they usually redo it when the grout is half gone. So is it removed just due to wear and tear and cleaning? Because normally the grout doesn't come out unless it breaks, does it?
Uh, yes, it could have to do with the chemicals and the heat, like the temperature of the pool and that kind of stuff as well.
Any other questions on that? Is your welcome?
Um. I noticed that the quote from decor tile, like their provided document was the same in both committee of the whole and this one, but the project description last week had stated that they would replace tile and the substrate if necessary. And in the new project description, that's not there. And if we look at their actual quote, none of that extra work is included. So what what are we looking at when they come and feel or decide they need to, because some of those pictures show like some of that tile really needs to be, you know, replaced, some of them anyways. And if that's the case, and they notice the substrate, you know, needing that that's not included anymore, right? That I was under the impression that it was last week.
Yeah, so um the previous report, I think there was a few mistakes in it. And after reading the contract, we realized that that is not included. And I did speak with the business owner and he said that the replacement of the tiles is not included. But what he did say is that we don't have to replace all the tiles, that they could sand them down so they would be smooth and then we would just regrow the whole area.
So even a picture of one where the tiles kind of cracked in half almost, would they just like sort of smooth that out and then fill the whole area in with growth and like?
Yes, from what I understand, that's what they would do.
Okay.
Counselor Anderson?
This grout that they're using, is it the same grout, epoxy grout that's in there now?
I honestly am not sure.
It binds to the growth that is.
That's that's my question. And so is it a longer, like a more rambunctious grout that will last longer or is it basically the same thing?
It's still the seven to 10 years. That's yeah.
The other question that I have too is I see see tiles that are lifting. How do they handle those? Just send them down till they're flat?
Yeah, so from what I understand, because we're just looking at maintenance on it, we're not looking at this being a yes. Um, so they would just send those down to make it a smooth surface.
Any other questions?
I guess then the amount that we're budgeting is pending. Nothing else is wrong or discovered, at which point I guess we might be, you know, faced with another decision possibly.
So from what, when I spoke with the gentleman, he had said that we do not have to replace the tiles. But if we so choose to, we could. And then he could give us a quote on what we need to replace. We did have Leanne walk around just to count the tiles on the deck that would potentially need replacement if that's something we decided and there was thirty, but he did say that just because they're cracked, doesn't mean they have to be replaced.
I guess I have one other question. Do we have any spare tiles on hand?
Not that Leanne said, so I can check and then get back to you.
It's quite often on a project of that size, there the tiles come in a case and there's usually some leftover, but maybe they're hidden in the back or public works has them stored somewhere. All right.
And Deputy Mayor, this is for budget purposes, just to the director of community services. This was the only quote that was received for this project?
Yes.
Is that, are they the only vendor for this project?
I definitely could look. This was done prior to me, but I can definitely look into it and see.
Yeah, if there is more time for this project and as long as it's under that seventy thousand.
All right, any other questions on the items one to nine on page forty six? That we brought up at Community the Hall.
Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, then is it council's wish that we bring the Tahoe through the summer, the by law vehicle and look at at trading it in the fall or seeing if we can dispose it after the season?
I think we'll talk about that right now. What's council's thoughts on that? Counselor Jessman.
Could we have some estimates of what the what we could ask or figure we could get for trade in so that we can make a better decision, I guess?
Thank you, Counselor Jessman. I'm not sure what I would go for. My suggestion is that we accept nothing less than the and then the cost of the outfit package. If you're trading is if it's really close within a couple thousand dollars, that'd be decision you can make. I think the up bit was around the, you can see what's in the package for the cost. So if it goes for that cost, then it's it's a fair deal. If if it's half that cost, then I would, I wouldn't look at it, right? So the whole idea is only if that outfit cost is recoverable, because then all you're paying for is a new chassis, which is, you know, reasonable. You have a new vehicle and the update is paid for by the trade in or the resale of the old product. So that would be the limit is we would, we would bring it back with a with a, we would ask that price and see what we get and we would bring it back to council and say, look, here's here's the the value we got out of it and it still would be your choice if you wish to proceed or to say, we'll leave it until it's gone. It's just the having the ability to try that.
Council, any other questions on that?
Yes, this, when you say trade in, this isn't a trade in, it's a resale, right? Like you're not trading it into Ford or GM because they've got no use for it.
No, I, the trade in is just a general, you know, term. So we would, we would sell the vehicle to a community that would be applicable for it. You would have to have that emergency service designation so you could run the lighting and the gear and as it's set up. And then that value of that sale would be applied to the vehicle and all you would do is sell the chassis or get a new chassis to put under that equipment, the new equipment. Yeah, we can't trade it in.
Any other questions?
If I may, Deputy Mayor, sorry, can I just jump in here? What Director Strober saying is correct. If we were to look at selling it, it would definitely be end of season. You know, we couldn't look to sell it right now and be without a vehicle for X and X number of months until the replacement came. In terms of getting a dollar value back to council, is there a certain timeline that you'd like to see that come back? In terms of what we could realistically expect to receive for the vehicle?
So question then, if we're looking at end of season, do we require this particular vehicle through the winter?
We don't. For this, this particular vehicle is used for the seasonal by law enforcement officer. So it's from May until the end of September.
So could it not be added to the twenty twenty four capital budget then? We'll certainly authorize administration to sell it at the end of the season. And then with the replacement into the twenty twenty four?
Perhaps what we could do, Deputy Mayor, is we could, if council wanted to table this particular item, we could bring it back in the fall. Once we've marketed it, because we may have to order the vehicle in the fall. So we're hoping that supply chains maybe are a little better come fall, but it might be a decision you might want to make within this fiscal year.
Okay, so we would amend the capital budget at that time?
We we won't proceed with any purchases on this vehicle until we bring back council a sale value on this vehicle.
All right, is everyone satisfied with that? All right, someone prepared to move recommendation one? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried a one oh three street rehabilitation. This was a rise and report essentially from the committee of the whole.
Yes.
To move tendering the project with options one, two, and three. Any discussion? Someone prepared to make that motion? Counselor Libra, all in favor? Carried. On the briefing note or the meeting with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, which they just canceled today.
Yes, the minister's office is very apologetic. She's had to cancel all every meetings during the Alberta municipalities, from what we understand. They were short meetings as it was. They did offer a meeting with the deputy minister, but because of people struggling with travel plans, we just offered the deputy minister an extra fifteen minute mental health break on Wednesday morning because it was so we I have provided the briefing note that we were going to provide to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. Council does have a meeting with MLA Joe Cece, who is the opposition critic for municipal affairs. If those are the items that council wishes to discuss, I will write it in a in a fashion that would be presented to an opposition MLA rather than a government MLA.
So this came about, I'm sure we all got the email from MLA Cece indicating that he was going to be at the spring conference or any interested municipality. And so I reached out to the CEO to say, hey, with the election coming up, this is the municipal affairs critic and it may be beneficial to at least make them aware of issues that we're facing in advance of the election. Is council fine with that? Okay, all right. Still any chance that we're going to line up any other?
Deputy Mayor, I am going to reach out to K Division tomorrow again. Unfortunately, most of our contacts have been on vacation, so I'll see what they are, even if it's a coffee meeting, you know, the quick, just to touch base with them. I've not been able to determine part of the problem with the spring conferences. It's short and it's right when legislate, the legislature is sitting. So it's somehow sometimes hard hard to get a hold of ministers, but I will reach out again to K Division. It's unfortunate, the Minister Driation with Alberta Transportation has promised a virtual meeting following the conference. He's not able to meet with us there.
That was the next question I was going to ask. Is Minister Schultz prepared to meet with us?
I'll definite reach out to her and say we could set up a virtual meeting at any point in time or she's more than welcome to come visit us now that the weather's getting.
All right, and then one final question I had not directly related to this. Minister Taves had promised us a meeting. I see that he has announced he's not seeking reelection. However, I think it would still be beneficial for council to meet with him and his deputy minister, who may be the same after the election.
Sure, we'll reach out.
Right. Any other questions on the briefing note? Anything else the council would like to see added to the list? He is simply the critic for municipal affairs, but that doesn't mean he's limited just specifically to that.
No, and and with these items, what I tried to do is fairly general and have these are issues that even though they're from other departments affect a municipality and its operations. So again, as it doesn't hurt to let opposition members know some of the issues we're struggling with as a community.
Certainly.
When is the meeting?
Question. It's on Thursday morning at ten o'clock. So the conference starts at one and we'll meet with him at ten and it's right at the hotel. Okay, someone prepared to move that for information? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. The Alberta Association of Police Governance Conference at AGM. We are members of this group. I believe we were new members last year. I actually attended their conference in AGM in St. Albert last year. I found it extremely informative and I think beneficial to the town. It is June second and third, is it? I believe, sorry, I don't have it on my. Is there anyone that would like to attend this? You can see their program? Counselor Jessman is part of the Community Policing Society. Are you interested in this? It's fire season.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I would certainly like to attend. Anyone else? I think it's June second and third. It's a Friday, Saturday in Rocky Mountain House. It's not a big conference. There was, I think, fifty people, sixty people there last year, but topical stuff and stuff that certainly pertain to our municipality. So I think we should at least have a presence there. So can I get a motion to attend?
Perhaps a motion for up to two counselors to attend.
Sure, Deputy Mayor and one of the council.
Right, someone prepared to make that motion. Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Correspondence for information. Is there anything in there that someone wants to?
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, my apologies. So yes, item thirteen three, new business. So we've received a request from the Air Traffic Specialist Association of Canada. This is a sort of a follow up to the issue we brought up a council two weeks ago on the potential of Nav Canada reducing the hour of the flight services at the high level airport, because currently it's twenty four hours, is it not? No. It's sixteen hours and they're looking to cut it back to. It's 16 hours. And they're looking to cut it back to 11 and a half hours for staffing purposes.
They're cutting it by three and a half hours, yeah.
But again, as the letter points out, firefighting services aren't necessarily over at 7:30 in the evening and given the amount of traffic that may be in the area during a wildfire, whether or not that's in the region's best interest. So they are looking for a letter of support from us to oppose the reduction in service. Any discussion? I doubt very much that they're going to increase to a 24 hour, but I believe that, and that was the reason it was brought up last time, is to Brian hit them off with the past, so to speak. This issue seems to come up every two or three years. And my concern is always, once you start down the slippery slope, how soon is it before this is an automated service, which I think would be a huge detriment, given where our airport is and the fact that we understand it's sort of key to the entire network in northwestern Canada, as far as Alaska is my understanding. So I think it's crucial that we maintain the service. And I think more service is probably better than less.
Yes, I'm, I'm in that category too, that I don't think we, I think we want to pursue this to make sure that we can try and keep at least the service we have. And if we can increase service, that's, that's even better probably, but I'm not sure how this would affect forestry. So.
It, it. Yeah, it is a concern. We met the last time and we met with the town and the, and when we put a proposal together and their concerns and government did as well. It, yeah, it's a huge concern because of the traffic with the sheer volume of big screen coming in and out on heavy fire load days. It's a huge safety concern for airplanes and local as well.
All right, someone prepared to move that we read a letter in support of maintaining the current level of service. Councillor Anderson, all in favor? Here, now we'll move to correspondence for information. Is there anything that someone wants to pull out into correspondence for action? Someone prepared to move to accept them as information? Councillor Jessman, all in favor? Here, so this brings to an end, the public portion of the meeting is currently 7:43. Again, we apologize for the technical difficulties. Oh, one other point that I just wanted to put out there, just because people may not necessarily be aware of the capital budget deliberation in committee of the whole last week that councillor Lambert, who does work for one of the potential suppliers, did excuse himself from that part of the debate. So didn't have any portion of those discussions when that part of the budget was approved. And that's why he's voting on the entire capital budget tonight, because those other parts have been pre-approved. Just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding from that perspective. Having said that, is someone prepared to move us into in camera? Councillor Liberon, all in favor? Here, have a good evening, everyone.